Item 10E, adopted resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment to the contract with HB Consulting Group in an amount not to exceed $1,570,000 to provide overall project management, engineering services, construction contract administration, and construction inspection services for the Glenview Neighborhood Reconstruction Project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. The item before you tonight is an amendment to an existing contract between the city and HB Consulting Group to manage and administer and take any and all actions necessary to support the community in the delivery of the reconstruction services to rebuild the Crestmore neighborhood that was so tragically and dramatically damaged by the explosion and fire nearly exactly two years ago. The work that is necessary in order to fully rebuild the neighborhood is underway, has been underway for a period of months now, and is being completed in a total of seven phases. I believe that we are in Phase Two, so we have a long ways to go. And that's the primary issue that is driving the item that is before you tonight. As you may recall, HB Consulting was brought on board with the city in spring of 2011 and has successfully overseen and completed the first phase of this project, which was to make some improvements to our water delivery system, impacting, directly impacting the fire-damaged area, and is in the middle now of the reconstruction of the underground infrastructure, water and sewer lines, in the footprint of the fire-damaged area. On the display that's projected behind me, you can see the scope of the Phase One work, but more particularly the Phase Two work that is in process, and that is the area that is generally outlined with the yellow dashed line and is colored, the streets are colored in blue. What you see also on this map is the area that is generally colored in red, which represents the streets in the remainder of the Crestmore neighborhood that was impacted by the explosion and the fire. And as the City Council is well aware, since the spring of 2011 and on an ongoing basis, our understanding of the needs of the neighborhood and our plans for a complete rebuild have evolved and have significantly expanded to include, in terms of geographic territory, the whole of the Crestmore neighborhood, as well as a variety of projects that were not initially contemplated when this contract was entered. The services that are being performed and that are proposed to continue to be performed by HB Consulting have expanded also, not just simply by the number and the types of the projects and by the footprint of the area to be rebuilt, but also by the intensity or the type of services that are really required in order to make sure that this project is done in a comprehensive and in a comprehensive manner and in a manner that is least impactful to the neighborhood. And I want to spend a moment on that because I think this is an issue that has been of significant concern to the residents of the Crestmore neighborhood for some period of time and unfortunately will continue to be at issue and needing our extreme attention for a significant period of time to come as we progress to completion of the projects in process and beyond that to the projects that are contemplated. Specifically, it has become increasingly a priority that there is literally on-site, on-target, around-the-clock presence by personnel whose job it is simply to monitor and to inspect the progress of the work, literally in real-time, full-time, as that work is proceeding. This additional level of service is not typical to construction projects generally. And I would say that even in the case where full-time inspection is provided, I would say it's highly unusual that inspection services, full-time inspection services at the level that we are providing them in the Crestmore neighborhood at the current time is significantly unusual. Currently, we have an inspector who is deployed to each of the two crews that are currently active on the city's contract project in the Crestmore neighborhood, and we anticipate that it will be necessary to continue that level of oversight and support, primarily to inspect and to monitor and manage the activities of the construction as it is progressing, but also in a very real sense to provide unseen support and a go-to presence for residents of the Crestmore neighborhood who continue to have numbers of questions and issues that arise on a daily, hourly basis relative to the variety of construction that is occurring in the neighborhood. While it's not immediately the job of the inspectors that are assigned under this contract, their immediate job is to oversee and to inspect the work that is being done under contract to the city to rebuild the infrastructure of the neighborhood. The presence in the neighborhood, given that there are a variety of other construction activities going on, private development to rebuild homes, private development to rehabilitate, to repair damage, to rehabilitate under PG&E's funded program, to improve the exterior appearance and landscaping, and a variety of other activities that are going on within the neighborhood. There is a very high level of construction activity and a very high level of impact to the residents of the Crestmore neighborhood generally. As I indicated, as we move from the immediate fire damage footprint out into the greater neighborhood, we expect that this level of attention and responsiveness to the neighborhood is going to continue. All of these activities are covered within the contract amendment action that is in front of you tonight, and I hope that by the comments that I've made, at least in part, address the questions that you may have about the amount of the contract amendment at $1.5 million. The detail of the work effort that is associated with this contract, as well as the financial analysis of how those activities break out, is provided in the report, and I think that they are relatively, have been presented fairly clearly, adequately clearly. Now, I wanted to address a couple of specific items about which I've received questions and maybe continuing to be questions for the City Council. First, this contract was originally and is continuing to be recommended as a not-to-exceed amount. And what that means is that by your action, the council is authorizing that services would be provided on a time and materials basis in an amount up to, but not exceeding, a total of $1.5 million. Combined with the $350,000 authorization that you previously provided to HB Consulting's contract, the total amount of the contract then is just over $1.8 million. That's in total. So the amendment is $1.5 million; the previous amount was $350,000. All costs are billed on a time and materials basis. We've provided the hourly rates in the staff report for the various activities and the personnel that are involved in the delivery of the services. And again, your action authorizes that process to continue up to the amount that is specified. Again, costs are billed on a time and materials basis. I can assure you that there is a high level of scrutiny that's provided, both on a day-to-day basis to the work that needs to be performed, as well as to the amounts that are being billed. And I can assure you that in order to meet the council's expectations and the needs of the community as we move forward on this important project and we move it to completion, that it is a necessary level of expenditure and a necessary level of service in order to adequately meet the needs of the residents that are being impacted. The all costs associated with this contract, both historically and going forward, are covered by the trust fund that was established through the joint efforts of the city and PG&E to assure that adequate funding was available, would be available, on a going-forward basis to cover the city's cost exposure for all activities related to arising from and occasioned by the explosion and fire. So that trust fund amounts for this contract, as they are invoiced and paid, are being drawn against the trust fund amount, and this contract, the services that are being performed, have no impact on the city's general fund. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Questions for the manager?
First of all, I just want to acknowledge that I do understand that because of the level of the sensitivity, that it is important that we do things that are unusual, as you said, in terms of how we support the projects up there. And I believe that Mr. Burrows is doing a great job up there. And so, I do have some concerns, however. First of all, just because of how large of an increase this is over what was initially proposed, and I understand that the area did grow quite a bit in terms of what we took on. However, it seems that, you know, we're looking at this two years after the fire, and it seems like we're still struggling to understand the magnitude of what we're taking on. Because of that, I believe that we need to be more sensitive to monitoring the bottom line of what we're doing. And I know that the bulk, at least from what I understand in the report, the bulk of what we're doing with the increase is the additional monitoring. I mean, only a small portion of that would be for additional project management for the larger area, but that monitoring that we're doing, the day-to-day monitoring, is going to be driving a large part of this cost. And, you know, one thing that comes to mind, I know it's kind of a running gag where people talk about any public works project has one guy with the shovel and three guys standing around watching them. And I understand that we need the extra level of sensitivity, but essentially what we're doing is we're adding people that are just going to stand around and watch other people do work. And while, I mean, we've seen that, you know, that there is a need for additional attention to detail because of the accident that happened up there recently. However, we're going to get to a point, we may or may not get to a point, where the funds have been depleted, and there may still be some projects left to do, and people are going to say, "Well, where's the rest of the money?" And we'll have to tell them, "Well, remember those guys that were standing around watching the work go on? They helped burn through that budget, and now there's no more money left." So, I mean, to me, that's a concern. I still feel like we're struggling, like I said, to get our arms around the magnitude of this. And I don't know if we're at a point now where we can actually outline where we're going to be at the end of this, what it's all going to look like, what all the expenditures are going to be. Do we understand enough now, at this point, to really fill in all the blanks? Or is it going to be continuing to be a learning process until we get to the very end?
So, let me see. You've embedded a number of questions there. Let me see if I can provide a response. First and foremost, I may have overstated, but probably deliberately, the extra level of care and concern and attention that's being provided to this particular project in this particular neighborhood. However, we've also provided in the report a comparison to the amounts that are being requested under this contract and typical costs associated with project management, contract administration, and inspection. And looking at that comparison, I think you'll observe that the costs that are being recommended through this contract are, in fact, actually very typical and would suggest that at the magnitude of this project, and I get to the project itself in your suggestion that we're still trying to figure this out incrementally and may not have our arms around it, the amounts that are being recommended here under this contract compared to typical construction management and administration and inspection costs are, in fact, quite typical for the magnitude of the cost, magnitude of the project that is being managed. In this case, the project scope was presented, there was a study session, I believe it was, with the City Council in December of 2011, at which time we worked through a variety of project concepts and reached conclusion of the scope of the work that was envisioned to address the needs of the entire neighborhood at a total estimated cost, construction cost of $21 million. So against, applying percentages against that $21 million, again, we get to a fairly typical, we find ourselves within a fairly typical range of project management and inspection I would not want to say at this time that the, we have, that there will be with certainty no change or expansion of the work that might be necessary in that neighborhood, but I would say it is my belief and understanding based on the work that we've previously done and the decision-making that the City Council has previously done, that we have a very clear concept of what the immediate infrastructure needs are within the geographic territory of the Crestmore neighborhood in order to put that infrastructure, that immediate underground and surface infrastructure into a state-of-the-art, state-of-the-art level and make the infrastructure in the fire burn area that needs to be replaced comparable to that which exists in the rest of the neighborhood. There may be some additional projects, if there is capacity, within the $50 million outer limit of the trust fund available to us. There may be some additional projects we want to recommend to you in the future. But at this point, I'm pretty satisfied that we've done a good job and that you've done a good job in evaluating the needs, and we are marching forward according to that plan. The issue of people standing around, watching other people put shovels in the ground, and I sort of have a mixed reaction in response to that. On the one hand, I would say, you're darn right. We're going to have people standing there because it's necessary to the interests and the security of the community to know that representatives of the city are watching every move that's being made by the contractors that are responsible for city projects in that neighborhood. Again, there's a heck of a lot of construction going on up there, and they are not directly inspecting everything, but they are certainly available to be eyes and ears within the Crestmore community to make sure that, for example, the types of things that are normally not a problem, when you have a remodel going on down the street from my house. You have construction traffic; you have construction vehicles potentially, or at least being perceived as exceeding the speed limits. You have stockpiled materials that may be impacted by wind. You have a lot of related things that go on, that people are concerned about, and that the additional presence on the site on a full-time basis is able to address in a real-time So beyond the standing around part and making sure that everything humanly possible is being done to make sure that the construction is done diligently and properly and without incident, there is an additional aspect to this that has been hugely beneficial to this city. And I would say, if you, you might go up there someday and talk to our inspectors, because my bet is that they would not perceive themselves as standing around, because in fact, they have quickly become go-to people as city representatives for the neighborhood. And we've actually received a, I guess the most telling thing that I could say to you is that there was an incident one Friday night a few weeks ago where a resident came home, and this was actually shortly after the very unfortunate accidental breach of the gas distribution line that in part precipitated the additional inspection that we're currently providing and that we're in part talking about tonight. There was a situation where a resident came home on a Friday night, a week or so after the breach of the distribution line. That resident smelled gas in her home. That would ordinarily be a call immediately to PG&E. Her first thought, actually, was to call the cell phone of the inspector who she had come to know because he'd been standing outside of her house, inspecting the work that our contractor had been doing that day in front of her house. He was able, of course, immediately to alert PG&E, but more importantly, he was able to alert us, and we were able to take, us being Harry and myself, and we were able to take care of the ancillary interests or needs of that resident in addressing her fear, her uncertainty, her emotional anxiety, while PG&E took care of investigating whether or not there was actually a leak, which it turned out there was not. So what was interesting to me about that was that although the familiarity may have come from that person standing there during the day, in fact, those people are providing a real and necessary service at this time in this place, and one that your city staff is not otherwise equipped to provide. So if I missed any parts of your question, let me know, but those are the comments that I would immediately have.
No, I think you addressed it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Through the chair.
Fair enough.
I was one that questioned the amounts. I thought the report missed the decimal point.
That was your first assessment?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And nothing against Harry or what his services are. And I saw the email, and I reacted before I even saw the report. And I think when I see the list, and I look at the map, and then you add that human touch, you know, as far as dealing with sensitive issues and what the people have gone through up there, I think it's warranted. I think Mr. Burrows is, I want to say, I don't want to give him this much, I don't want to say he's perfect for the job, but I think he's proven that he's the right person for the job. This is not my, in what I know about construction and construction management, this is not a typical situation. I don't know what would be, other than, you know, planning a city or something. HB Consulting has 300 clients up there and may need to deal with every single one or a majority of them at any given time over the next couple of years. And some of them are not going to be happy. And so, that part, you'll have to deal with. So I see all of this, and then I hear what you're saying, and I think it's appropriate. And I know that he and his people are up there to address even the private contractors, the private projects and everything. And so I see some of those duties that are vague, but don't necessarily are specific to the city's contractor, but could be interpreted, and, you know, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but interpreted to deal with anything that may happen with a private resident. And then you have the very last duty, which is other duties as directed by the city. So, I mean, you look at the numbers, you look at how we want them to be there and how the community would expect us to be up there representing, you know, and it's a time and labor and psychological, you know, labor up there. So I think it's, I think it's well done, and I look, hopefully look forward to a smooth, smooth next two years, final phases.
Anyone else? I would ask anybody you want for purposes of voting on something you have to accomplish. I'll be on the way. I want to talk about the time and the work. Very, very sensitive. Work is people. Of course, yes. But what do you do? Huge concern, please. I'll have to go. Both of you, despite your selection. Back to the world. It's not.
I want to add something that I did forget to mention in response to Councilmember Salazar's comment in additional thought, and that is, I don't want to over, provided to support the neighborhood and not just simply to inspect the project. Don't
Don't misunderstand that city staff and different ways throughout the day, every day, is also active in making sure that the needs of the neighborhood and the, and the community are being met. So, this is, this is by no means the only way that this project is addressed or supervised by organization. You, you have a, you express a concern about the, this is a big number, and you express a concern about beyond my previous comment about, you know, how you might consider it to be within the typical range, whether or not we're, and whether there will be adequate to do everything that we need to do. And I just wanted to context that the council is aware that the, that the trust fund has a maximum amount of $50 million. It has a very broad number of things that need to be captured and considered that go well outside even of the construction, the physical construction arena. And that said, just to put this in context a little bit for you, and hopefully to alleviate your, your concern a little bit, through July of 2012, we have expended a reported total of $4.5 million out of the, out of the trust fund. Now, obviously, that may not be every single invoice paid current, but it is a, at least it gives you some order of magnitude to where we are, and that would include costs that are associated with this construction activity, but would give you some sort of sense of order of magnitude. Again, the construction costs for the project as it's currently envisioned are $21 million, soft costs, close to $2 million, and then there are, there's an enormous laundry list of, of other things, but we're mindful of the, of the fact that there is a ceiling and there is, there is a great deal that needs to be done, and that will continue to need to be done over the next period of time.
I, I just want to add that regardless of whether we have, we're fortunate to have the trust fund, and I think this council, this community and this staff has made it clear that we're going to take care of the people up there, and we're fortunate to have the funds to bring in the expertise, to bring in whatever it takes to take, you know, to watch over them. I also want to say, I don't necessarily agree that we're not sure what to do up there. I think we're very clear on what we're going to do up there. I think sometimes we grapple with, maybe we're doing too much because of the sensitivity to the residents up there. Because as much as they want to look forward to normalcy, it's not necessarily going to be normalcy for a couple of years. So, it's like, do we look to the future and then just say, "Okay, in a few years, well, you'll thank us and say this is, you know, this is all well worth it," you know, and then pay this gentleman and his company to put up with what he has to put up with, you know, because it's not going to be normal for these people for the next couple of years.
I'll introduce the resolution. Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ibera.
Aye.
Mayor Rui.